Oh, it's not recorded?
There you go.
Okay, sorry. We'll go ahead and get started with our next docketed item on, our last docketed item for the day, and I'll call on Ms. Fox to read that docket, please.
Docket PZ seventeen dash zero two one. Application has been filed by Daniel Finley for approval to amend a binding element attached to the original approval of the reserves of Deerfields. Docket PZ zero six zero thirty-four. The development is located at thirty-nine hundred North Highway three ninety-three LaGrange. The property is zoned R-two residential.
All right, Ms. Alvey, I'll call on you again to introduce the docket, please.
All right, last docket of the day. This is a request for a binding element amendment for the reserves of Deerfield. The property is located at thirty-nine hundred North Highway three ninety-three in LaGrange and is zoned R-two residential. This is an aerial photo of the proposed or the approved subdivision. You can see that this section is the only section that has currently gone to record and has been built. The applicant is requesting the Planning Commission to amend a binding element specifically number twelve, which requires homes to be ninety percent brick. The binding element reads, "The houses shall be constructed of at least ninety percent brick and shall be substantially similar to the renderings presented during the hearing." On April twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen, the Oldham County Planning Commission denied a request to amend the binding element, binding element number twelve, and the proposed change was, "The exterior building material on all four sides of each structure shall be comprised of at least eighty percent brick, stone, masonry board, James Hardy type, brick veneer or stone veneer or a combination of the same and shall be substantially similar to the renderings presented during that hearing." So this was the photos that were presented during the Planning Commission hearing in two thousand and six when the subdivision was originally approved and that binding element was put in place regarding the ninety percent brick. The applicant wishes to amend the binding element to read, so the new, the new request today is, "The houses shall be constructed of at least ninety percent brick, brick veneer, stone or stone veneer or a combination thereof and shall be substantially similar to the renderings presented during the hearing." A record plat for section one was approved and recorded for thirty-one lots. If the amendment is approved as requested, the remaining hundred and sixty-eight lots in the future sections would be subject to this revised binding element. The applicant's justification statement states, "The inclusion of stone as a permitted building material for the exterior walls of residences will allow for a greater variety of attractive construction within the development." These are pictures, again, of the current homes that are in the reserves of Deerfield. So these homes have already been constructed. So in summary, the applicant is requesting an amendment to binding element number twelve to go from ninety percent brick to ninety percent brick, brick veneer, stone or stone veneer or a combination thereof and shall be substantially similar to the renderings presented during the hearing. And this just kind of gives you an overlay of what this, the outlined in red, that is the section that has currently gone to record and constructed, and this binding element would be for all of the future sections.
Okay.
That is all I have.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Mr. McQuaid.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Amy, would you go back and show the photos of the houses that were currently built, that had been currently built in section one?
This is, these are the homes that are, that are built in section one.
I can't see very well, but I'm, several of them do not appear to be all brick.
Correct.
Okay. So we have homes in section one that are in violation of the binding element.
Correct. Yes, sir.
I'll save my next question to you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any additional questions for staff? Oh, Mr. Finney, yes, sorry.
Amy, they, to me, the change in the binding element seems to be the removal of the Hardy board, basically.
Correct. It's, it's going, um, let's see. It originally, um, I get my, it originally was eighty percent. The last request that was before you guys in April was eighty percent, and it included masonry board.
Okay.
And today, they are requesting ninety percent, and it's brick, stone, brick veneer, stone veneer, so no Hardy plank, and, and at ninety percent.
Thank you.
Uh, I just had a quick question, and I know Mr. Douglas has got one, but on the, like in the, the, up in the, you know, the soffits and, and different things, that, I mean, that can still be vinyl or?
Yes. That would be the ten percent of non-brick, brick veneer, stone or stone veneer.
Okay. So that ten percent would cover most of the instances of, of, up in the areas.
Areas that cannot be bricked, correct.
Mr. Douglas.
Amy, I know the difference, but for some of the Commissioners, you want to, and you might, I don't know if you can answer it, the difference between brick veneer and stone veneer?
It's the, the pro, that type of product, I guess you would say. I don't know how detailed you want me to go into.
Well, you can ask the applicant that question, since they're the one requesting it.
Anything else, Mr. Douglas?
No, that's it.
Okay. Ms. Crosby.
Another question I'd add to that, if you would, if you would, if you would.
That's probably a question for the applicant.
Yeah. I don't think, she was not here last month when we had, or in April, were you here in April?
No.
Okay. When we, when we had that, but.
All right. Any additional questions for staff? All right. Thank you, Ms. Alvey. We'll now move into the presentation by the applicant or representatives and others in support of the application. Mr. Finley.
My name is Daniel Finley, eleven hundred Finley Road, LaGrange, Kentucky. Any other preliminary questions that, okay?
Go ahead and make your presentation.
So let me, yeah, we'll keep this quick. Most of you were here at the previous hearing a few months ago, and just to simplify it all, the current binding element's ninety percent brick. Basically, we're requesting it be ninety percent brick or stone. When we say stone, we're adding stone veneer as well, thinner product that builders use, masonry product that builders use in direct areas of, of the home. Let me tell you where we were, where we are, and then where we would like to be, as a recap. So three mon, well, maybe it was two months ago, we were here before this board. I wasn't here, I didn't file the, the request. It was filed by Ridge Partners. They're the developer of the subdivision, and that was about two months ago. Three months before that, they had come to me and said that, in talking with builders, they had come up with some opposition in relation to builders wanting more flexibility of what type of homes could be built. They looked at the binding element, binding element says ninety percent brick, and they asked me, they said, "Well, what do you think?" I said, "Well, I, you know, the binding element is what it is." They said, "Well, a few of the homes don't meet the binding element." So I'm, I'm aware of that now. I looked through the, through the subdivision, and yeah, twenty-seven of the thirty-one homes built do, four of them don't. It might be five, four or five don't. And I told them, I said, "I can't represent you, I am an attorney," and I told them, "I can't represent you on this because my interests may or may not be aligned with yours, number one. Number two, you're going to go before the board," and I tell, I'm telling them this, "You're asking to go before the board and change the binding element while simultaneously admitting that some of the homes that you've built don't meet the binding element." And I said, "That, that might go over like a lead balloon, but, you know, it's your prerogative." They said, "Well, it would make it a whole lot easier for us, flexibility-wise, to, to have eighty percent instead of ninety percent." I really liked the idea of having ninety percent, but they, they wanted eighty. I said, "Well, all," and they wanted a little flexibility with the type of materials. So I said, "I'll help you put something together, but hire a lawyer, see how it goes." So they, and what I told them, I said, "But I'd really like to see our renderings of the homes that you guys want to build. I'm not so much concerned about the binding element, and neither is my family. We're more concerned about the homes that are going to be built. Show me some renderings of these homes." So, that takes us to the hearing that we had back two months ago, we'll say. At that hearing, I still didn't have the renderings of the homes, so I didn't know exactly what was going to be built. I knew the builders that they'd been talking to, but I didn't have the renderings yet. So the homes that they showed at the hearing were not homes that were going to be built, but homes that were already constructed in the subdivision. And they went for you guys, and they hired their lawyer, it was Barry Baxter, I believe, and they gave their presentation, and then they voted and got shot down, it was like eleven to one, twelve to one, whatever. Well, it was shellacking, but it, it wasn't, wasn't close. They left, and, and they called me a few days later, and said, "Well, you know, turns out these builders still want to build, and of course they do, it's good property." I mean, we knew that. And I said to them, I said, "Well, you know, I, I still need to see these renderings of what's, what's ultimately going to be built. More concerned about that. You show me the renderings and then, of what exactly they want to build, and then I'll show the pictures to my family, and we'll work the binding element out on the back end." So they finally got me these renderings, and, and I, one aside, you know, when they came before the board, they said, "Well, you know, it's, it's, we got the binding element, ninety percent brick, and it's the builders that were building the homes that, that had violated the binding element, and some of you asked some questions, who's, who should know, should it be the builder or the developer?" Well, in this instance, two of the homes that violate the binding element were built by the developer. They're, the developer and the builder, just different arms of the same outfit, built the homes. So they clearly should have known that they were violating the binding element, and, and they have no excuse, clearly. Nobody in the county cared, I mean, nobody even objected to it. It was the first home that actually went into the subdivision, didn't meet the binding element, and that was in two thousand and six, and nobody said a word for eleven years. But I told them it's going to be a uphill battle if they were going to try to, to get it changed. But they finally got the renderings to me, and I showed them to everybody in my family, and everybody looked at them and thought, "These are fine homes." Herefore, I haven't shown anybody these renderings, other than, I showed Mr. Tucker today, but I have them to show you guys. So I took the pictures to my family, and I showed them, I said, "They loved them, they thought it would be great to see these homes be built, and, and these homes can be built by builder that can do this fairly quickly." But I said, I said, one caveat, I said, "Not all these homes can be built pursuant to the binding element. Only half of them can. Half of them don't meet the binding element." So they said to me, "Well, what do you need to do?" I said, "Well, I mean, I don't make the rules. I can just, I can go before the board and ask them to change the binding element," and I said, "We can do it really simply. All we have to do is change a couple of words, and every single one of these homes can be built." And let me show you what, what they're being proposed to build. And these are actual elevations of homes that, that they want to build. And it says here, "All elevations in the reserves of Deerfields will have four sides architecture as required by binding elements. Elevations are artist's concept and images are for illustrative purposes." So that one meets the binding element as written. And let me stop. So when I got these renderings, I've included them as part of a contract. These are actually Exhibit D in a purchase agreement. And I made clear in any documentation that I have between myself, my family, and the developer, that these, the homes that have to be built, or that are going to be built, have to meet the binding element that's in place on the day of the closing. We haven't had any closing on land. The developers can't even develop, they can't build one more house because they don't have access to any of the land. We haven't sold any of it to them. So they're really at our mercy in terms of where we go from here. And I told them, I said, "And what we're going to do in this contract is, we're going to put a provision in it," because the county apparently doesn't care whether the binding element was met, in terms of, there were no violations that, that were significant enough to raise any concern for any complaint to be built. But it mattered to me that the binding element is not being met. So I've placed within the purchase agreement that I have with the developer, that any homes, if there's ever a home that doesn't meet the binding element, then they will pay my family one million dollars of liquidated damages. Now, I represented the code board for a few years and did it for free, and what, what I realized is they slap ten, twenty thousand dollar fine on you for violating that. That didn't come close to one million dollars. So we're making sure that the binding element's going to be met by putting a liquidated damages clause in there for that. But let me show you the other homes that they want to build. This one does not meet the binding element as currently established because of the stone. If you, if you, if you throw the stone in there, you're, you're beyond ninety percent. This one would meet the binding element, but this one wouldn't because of the stone. And just a couple more. This one would, and that one wouldn't, and this one, oh, that's close. I mean, it might, it might not. When we talk about stone veneer, the reason that that's part of the language that I'm requesting in this binding element is, if you look at the front of it, the, a builder may use a stone veneer for those products at the entrance way of the house. It's a little thinner, is an architectural element, but then the whole home itself, it would be, would be brick. All sides of this are going to be ninety percent, has to be ninety percent brick or stone is what we're requesting. We think that if this, if you guys would approve this one, then this subdivision can be built out, and it would be a very nice asset for the community. Hundred and sixty-eight lots we're looking at, hopefully could be built out within the next five years. I mean, it obviously depends on the economy. If this binding element is not changed, um, you know, I've already entered into the, the contract, family's already signed it, there would be some, there would be some, you know, upset feelings here in terms of, well, you know, all these pictures, all these are very nice homes, why on earth would this not be approved? And it, and it might affect what we do down the road with other areas of the farm, but I believe that, that this is a, is a, is a wonderful way to continue this development. I spoke to Mr. Tucker today, and I hadn't spoken to him at all. I know he's, I'm busy with family situations and health issues, and, and he is as well. He, he's looked at these pictures today, and I don't believe he has any objection to, to this. Everyone in the subdivision, I think, believes that it's appropriate. I know you guys don't want to get involved in, you know, policing building materials for, you know, this, these subdivisions. I know it's a strange one that this binding element's even there, but, and I'm promising you, we're not coming before the board again to ever change it. We, I like the fact that, that we're keeping that ninety percent threshold, and if we do change it to, to allow stone, it adds a little more variety into where we can have these homes to be built a little quicker and market them better for, for the community. If you have any questions, feel free to let me know.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And I will make these pictures a part of the, of the permanent record.
Yeah, we'll need those. Yes, sir.
To what?
Sure. Thank you. All right. Is anyone that would like to speak in support of this application or this proposal? Let's see here. What about, we'll move in now to testimony and questions by those opposing the application. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak in opposition or have questions? Seeing no one, we'll open it up for Commissioners. Do you have any questions for the applicant on what's being proposed?
I would have a question.
Ms. Crosby?
Did it?
Is your mic on?
Did this have to be advertised? I'm looking at nobody here. Did we have to advertise this also?
Yes.
Yeah, at one point, the, the last hearing we had, and you weren't at the, at the last one. There was opposition from Mr. Tucker. At that point in time, he, he was observing, I don't want to speak for him, but he was concerned about the Hardy board component. I've, I've taken that out. We're going just masonry products with brick and stone. I understand his objection to that. It's, maybe it's a generational thing, I don't know. Some younger people might like Hardy board, but bottom line is, we can still allow Hardy board on ten percent of the home, and, but we've taken that out, ninety percent brick or stone. There was one other individual here who was a physician, he was a, he's a pediatrician, and I think he, along with Mr. Tucker, objected to the, to the Hardy board element, which is why we've, we've removed that. No one else, no one else objected at that prior hearing other than, than, than those two objections. And I think we've removed them by, by changing the language of this. And it would have been better, frankly, you know, it would have been a lot better for the developer if they had gone to the homeowners and said, you know, "This is what we're proposing." They probably could have worked this out themselves and gotten some language that no one would have objected to, but they didn't do that. I'm basically coming in, and I told them, I said afterwards, like, "I'm going to file my own application and, and, and get it done to where everybody's going to be in agreement with it," which is what I've done, and so, yes.
That's, that's all.
Okay. Any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, Mr. Klingefus?
Yes, I don't quite understand why it was handled this way. Is a deed restriction, I mean, why wasn't it a deed restriction instead of a binding element?
Mr. Irvin?
Well, it, it was a binding element. Typically, they are deed restrictions. Somehow, I think the real question is, how did it get to be a binding element? And I don't know that. But obviously, as a binding element, neither the previous administrator nor I even knew it was there, so we issued building permits in violation of that binding element until it was brought up by Mr. Tucker that, "Hey, these houses are being built," and they don't even comply with the binding element and slash deed restriction. So I think this is a corrective measure, and I have a proposed binding element that would keep us from missing it this time, if you choose to approve it.
We don't really have any authority to regulate.
If it's a binding element, we do, yes, but not a deed restriction.
Only if the developer agrees to it.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, Mr. Douglas, oh, I'm sorry.
And, I'm sorry, but the owner of the property is actually requesting this, so obviously they're in agreement with it. If we change the binding element, he would pass that on to the proposed developer slash builders.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas? I'm sorry. Let me get your camera back up.
The deed of restrictions don't have a number on there. They don't say ninety percent. The deed of restrictions were, were created back in two thousand and six, and they basically say, "Homes can be made of brick, stone, brick veneer, stone veneer," but it, and, and I think it includes masonry as well, but it doesn't have a threshold on it. So without the binding element, if it didn't exist, if that binding element didn't exist, then a home could go up tomorrow that's all Hardy board, or that's all brick, or all stone. That ninety percent is an important number, and it, and it does, they could have, here's the thing, they could have put that in the deed of restrictions, not even made it a binding element from the, from the beginning, but, but they could go in and change that at any point in time, sell land to another developer, the developer still has control. They could change the, the deed of restrictions and, and change the whole direction of how things go. This, the binding element's stronger because it's, it's decided by you guys, and you all have ultimate control over that and what this neighborhood's going to look like. Obviously, we have control, our family as well, because we own the land and, and have a control there, and that's why I've placed a million dollar provision in it. Some counties actually throughout this country have ordinances that resemble that binding element, that, that actually say, "No homes can be constructed unless they're ninety percent." So I mean, it's not, yet maybe it's rare in Oldham County to have a binding element talk about, you know, that restricts building materials, but frankly, there are counties that have ordinances that do that. So it, it's not unheard of.
Okay. Is that all, Mr. Klingefus?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Klingefus asked many of the questions I was going to ask anyway, so, but I just wanted to follow up. So you're here today representing as owner of the development?
Yes, the, we sold twenty-five acres back in two thousand and six, and on that twenty-five acres, they developed thirty-one lots. They, they actually own six or seven lots that, that are contiguous to the twenty-five, but they can't build a road because they don't own land that would access that. They don't own any land adjacent to, we didn't sell a hundred and, I think what was zoned was a hundred and eighteen acres for a hundred and nine, a hundred and ninety-nine lots, but we only sold twenty-five acres. So they developed that out. They don't own any more land, so I'm here as, as the land owner on, and actually attorney for other, all the other landowners for this particular section. And to be honest with you, the, the developer themselves, their plan is to sell this parcel to a builder or builders to build these particular homes, and they, they agree, I, I speak with them fairly regularly, they, they agree with this provisions, well, going from ninety percent to ninety percent, going from ninety percent brick to ninety percent brick and stone. So everyone, basically everyone is in agreement with this, with what's being requested today.
So, maybe staff could answer this. So are you representing the developer who are, also owns those lots?
They don't own anything.
They don't own anything?
Mm-mm.
So you own all the lots, and then you sell the lots to the developer?
No, we own the land, and we haven't sold the land to anyone. If that makes, Mr. Irvin, you might want to.
Yeah, the, the next section has not been developed yet. There are no roads or anything. If you look in the staff report at the Arrow photograph, you'll only see section one.
Right.
What Mr. Finley is saying to you is that section two, three, or ten, or whatever, has not been transferred.
So we're only just approving, or if we decide we're only making the changes to the lots that haven't been?
Exactly, to the lots.
So not the ones that?
Right. It's just to the future, it's just to the lots that, that haven't been developed yet, which is a hundred and sixty-eight lots. So this, this covers a hundred and sixty-eight lots. I mean, we could have sold all the land back in two thousand and five, but that just, it's hard to sell a hundred and eighteen acres unless you do it at a discount, and we weren't willing to do that.
I mean, lots are still available in the other sections.
There's one hundred and sixty-eight total lots. I can explain to you how this ultimately will be developed out according to any future, any contracts that we may have. The developer wants to do this in three phases over a three and a half to four-year period. I think that's probably ambitious, depending on the nature of the economy, but they would like to, 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 you know, hopefully do thirty, twenty to thirty homes a year if possible, but it's going to take four or five years.
Section one, all the lots have been sold and constructed.
Okay, well, when, last time Mr. Tucker came in and testified, he, he mentioned he didn't want to see a house behind him that had Hardy board.
Right.
So is that the lots that are vacant on the hundred and sixty-eight?
If you could show, could you show the picture of the hundred and sixty-eight? I'll show you exactly where Mr. Tucker lives. If, can I?
Yeah.
Does that work? Can I put my finger on it?
Yeah.
My finger's not being seen.
Your finger would tap it.
Ah, there. Mr. Tucker lives right, Ms. Tucker lives right. Do you live right here? Not that one, this one.
Yeah.
Right there.
Corner lot.
The corner, he lives in the corner lot. So behind him would be right, right this, or he didn't want any, any Hardy board homes right there. And Ms. Tucker, I'll tell you right now, that, that if we ever develop, develop this land over here, I, I won't put any Hardy board right there for you. How, how's that sound? I won't even put it there. I, I can't necessarily guarantee across the street, but, across three ninety-three, but no, we won't put any Hardy board next to, to Mr. Tucker. And, and no, this development plan covers, the hundred and sixty-eight lots are all that. So basically, everything there, which is a hundred and sixty-eight lots, would be brick and, or brick, brick or stone or a combination thereof.
And, and this commission, I don't think, can establish any of that, but is your homeowner association or your bylaws or whatever is written, does it, how does it explain about what the builder must build in there?
Well, the deed of restrictions cover building materials, and they say that homes can be built of brick, stone, Hardy board. They covers, it covers the gamut of what they can build, but, and that's why, and that's why I think there was some confusion and why a couple of those homes didn't meet the binding element, because there was an incongruence between the deed of restrictions and the binding element. What I'm saying is, the homes that were built, there were two of them built by the developer, they should have met the binding element because they wrote the deed of restrictions themselves, and they were here when the binding element was approved. But that, be that as it may, there is an incongruence between the deed of restrictions and the binding element. All the homes that have to be built in here, all hundred and sixty-eight, have to be ninety percent, if you guys approve the request, have to be ninety percent brick or stone. Right now, they have to be ninety percent brick. All we're simply asking is to add stone into the mix so that we can make it a little more architecturally suitable for today's market.
Are you amending those deed of restrictions for that section?
No, the, the deed of restrictions, even as they're written, there, when I say there's an incongruence, there's not an incompatibility, okay? There, there's perhaps an incongruence, but not an incompatibility. In other words, the deed of restrictions can be, can stay as they are and not be incompatible with a binding element that says ninety percent brick or stone, okay? Now, the deed of, the deed of restrictions might have more stuff in it, but it doesn't have less. So I, it, it makes sense to me in my mind that there's not an incompatibility between the two. And you're got, the county's job is to enforce the binding elements, the homeowners would enforce the deed of restrictions. If every home is built according to the binding elements, then the deed of restrictions will not be violated. not be violated. I, that, that's what I mean, there's no incompatibility.
I, I just, just know for, just, I'm just concerned that in five years, 10 years, or whatever, you're not back here, or somebody's not back here again.
Won't be possible. Number one.
To say that, well, I didn't understand the deed of restrictions because it said that I could have hardy board, I could have this, I could have that, and, you know, times can change down in the planning direct office down there, so.
Well, it, if a home is built according to the binding element, then it will meet the deed of restrictions. By, that's, that's a tautology. I mean, it, it just is the way it is.
And I'm going to propose a binding element that'll cover that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I just heard you say that if you, if we were to approve this, that they're going to be 90% either brick or stone, just to, and what you're asking for, if I read this right, 90% brick or brick veneer? Or stone? Stone veneer?
I'm speaking in a, in a colloquial when I, when I say brick or stone. I've included veneer in this because that's the type of product that, that builders are using for architectural accidents. Where did I get this? From the subdivision, Brentwood subdivision. Their deed of restrictions say brick, stone, brick veneer, stone veneer.
Okay, so what you really ask?
I've just taken that language from there, and yes, you're right. I mean, to be, to be more artful, the actual request that's been submitted in writing to you is to change from 90% brick to 90% brick, stone, brick veneer, or stone veneer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any additional questions before we move on? All right, seeing none, Mr. Finley, do you have a final statement you'd like to make?
Well, I just want to apologize for any, any confusion that this may have caused over the, the course of the last few months. It came to my attention that, that the binding element hadn't been met. No one takes it any more seriously than me. That's why we've placed within this provision for $1 million in damages if there's a violation. And you can rest assured that even if nobody in the county mentions it, I mean, I don't necessarily want the $1 million, but, you know, if there's a violation, you know, I'll, I'll be the first to, to take it. But we just want to see this thing built out and look very nice for the community. Thanks.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, with that, I'll ask Mr. Urban if he would outline, and I think he's got some proposed language here for us to consider.
Again, you're being asked to consider changing the binding element number 12 in the original approval to read, "The houses shall be constructed of at least 90% brick, brick veneer, stone, stone veneer, or a combination thereof, and shall be substantially similar, similar to the renderings presented during the hearing. The binding element that is proposed, number one, there are two of them. The approval shall only apply to the binding element considered at this June 27, 2017 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing, and all other conditions of approval from docket PZ 06-030 shall remain in effect." And then the second one that I've written is that, "Building plans submitted for permits must delineate the percent of material on each elevation, and this binding element must be stated in any and all deed restrictions." And I think that will cover the issue. How do we enforce it? Number one, that first part of it is, has to be on the building plan, so I don't, we don't have to measure the percentage they state it. And then, that it be in the deed restrictions along as, as, as stated in the binding element. So those two things, and I'm, Mr. Finley is shaking his, he's in agreement.
Better get you to come back up, and so we can get it on the record, please.
That's why they pay Mr. Urban the big bucks, and I'm, I'm in agreement with what he's proposed.
And that'll kind of cover it so that we don't miss this again. And it, and it really puts the effort on the builder to put that on the building plans, so we're clear in what the percentage is.
All right, Mr. Combs, anything you need to add to that?
Nothing.
All right. Commissioners, we are now down to a motion on docket PZ 17021, which is an application to amend the approval of a binding element. And as you've heard outlined, we need to, need to consider a motion on this. Yes, sir, Mr. McWilliams?
I think I can get away with this. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the applicant's request for a, a binding element revision, as per the verbiage that was just shared with us by Mr. Urban.
Binding elements?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Mr. Carter, I mean, Mr. Carter's back there, Mr. Combs.
That's okay. That's fine.
Okay, that's good, all right. That sounds good. Do we have a second? Okay? I've got a second down here, our new, a new board member, okay? Yes, sir. All right, any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, Ms. Smith.
Does the word "only" need to be in there, that you can only use those four products? Will that take care of it? Lifting them, are they going to come, are the builders going to say it didn't say? It can be twisted.
It says at least 90% brick, brick veneer, stone, stone veneer, or a combination thereof.
I'm talking about the four products, only the four products.
Well, I think we're twisting words. At least 90% brick, brick veneer, stone, stone veneer, it really does say only, by saying at least 90%.
Yeah. Okay.
They say a combination thereof.
A combination thereof. But, but good point, I, if you want to add it somewhere, I don't know exactly how.
It's a big box.
All right, any further discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Horton?
Thank you. So essentially, we're voting on the same one that was denied before, except they're taking out the word masonry board.
No, because they're eliminating 80% and making it.
And changing, and changing the percentage.
And taking out hardy board.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And, and if I can add to that, though, you've also seen renderings of, of proposed homes that are, again, just not necessarily the exact ones, but showing the conditions. So at least this time you have better pictures of the brick and stone that might be applied on the, on the facade.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any further discussion before we vote? All right, Ms. Fox, if you would, this is a motion to approve amendment to the binding elements on docket PZ 17021. This is a motion to approve.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Clingefus?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
All right, the motion to approve the amendment to the binding element has, on docket PZ 17021, has been approved on a vote of 10 to 1. All right, and with that, we've got just a couple things under other business we need to discuss here, and then we'll adjourn. Ms. Alvey, you want to bring us up to date on our commission training hours?
Sure. There were five commission members that attended the May 24, 2010, 2017 House Bill 55 training. Those were Chairman Jeffries, Commissioner Finney, Smith, King, and Horton. So I'm not sure if we want to make a motion, or we just want to put that into the minutes as record, that they received eight hours of training, which meets their requirement for the, for their two-year cycle.
We usually do that by motion, I think. So if I could get a motion to approve those five training, or those five commissioners' training? Mr. Fal, okay.
Make motion.
Okay, Mr. Falvey moved, and then Mr. King seconds. Okay, I think we could do this by voice vote. All those in favor of approving the five commissioners' House Bill 55 training for eight hours signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Okay, those have been approved.
There was also training opportunity that I sent out for, on June 13. This was done by Louisville Metro. This was the Congress for New Urbanism Placemaking. The only commissioner that attended was Laura Bonet, and it was for three hours. So if we can get a motion to approve that training as well.
Could we get a motion on that?
So moved.
Mr. King moves? Okay, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Horton, seconds. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving three-hour training for Ms. Bonet signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Okay. Been approved?
There is another training opportunity on July the 26th. It's the same training that the previous commissioners went to, that was provided by David Pike. It talks about mandatory planning education, sign regulations after Reed versus Town and Gilbert, which is a big deal. And then also about House Bill 72. If anyone wants to attend that training, you will get your eight hours of training credit for that. Contact me, I will register you, and, and we will also pay for that, because I believe the fee, I think it's $99 to attend that training. So that is on July the 26th, it is a Wednesday. It's in Lexington. I'm not sure the exact location. I didn't go any further in to see where it was, but it's in Lexington. So if anybody wants to attend that, let me know, I will get you signed up and get it paid for. It's the exact same training that we just had, that, that you attended. Next, filing deadline is this Wednesday for Planning Commission. We have one zoning map amendment that may be ready, but most likely they will be here in August. But I don't know of anything else that I can think of.
So we might not have a?